All right, I'd like to call to order this planning and zoning meeting for March 9th. The time is 6 o'clock PM. Miranda, can I get?
Mission member Richie?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Herman? Soldwich? Decker? Wormsby?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Right, Agenda Item 3A, approval of the May 9th meeting. Agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to post? Agenda Item 4A, approval of the April 9th meeting minutes?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to post? All right, Agenda Item 5, public comment. This would be for anyone that has a comment or concern that is not related to an agenda item. Do I have anyone here for that? Item 6 would be old business. It doesn't look like we currently have anything under that. So we'll move to Item 7A. Consider waiving the right to review of a plot of survey for Chad Daniels for a property located within two miles of the city of Indianola.
This is a plot of survey request submitted by Chad Daniels on behalf of Joshua Kling. They're requesting a survey approval for a property to create parcel F, which would be a 5.62 acre parcel. The applicant has indicated that this split would be to sell that tract to the property owner's grandson. As this subject area is outside of Indianola's priority growth area, we are recommending a resolution to waive the city's subdivision.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or concerns from the commission? Do I have anyone in the audience that's here for this agenda item? Would you like to come up to the podium and just state your name and address?
Um, one lead. The side of the property line from the area. My question is?
For, it sounds like it's getting commercial.
I think this is, I think you're coming for another item. This, this one's for, yeah, you're talking for the?
Chad Daniels and Yoder.
Chad Daniels has, he's the surveyor, so he has all of these ones. So the Yoder one is the third one on the agenda, so you're fine. It was getting turned around. You said Henderson, I'm like, wait a second. No, you're okay.
Does anyone else that's here for this item? Would you like to step up to the podium? Oh, you didn't, no. Okay, all right. All right, so no questions, concerns from the audience or commission? Can I get a motion?
Yes. I'd like to move that we waive the right to review this plot of survey.
A second.
Richie?
Yes.
Wormsby?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Marmon?
Yes.
Item 7B, consider recommendation on request for approval of a plot of survey for Chad Daniels on behalf of Steve Henry for property located in 9393 143rd Avenue.
So this is a survey request submitted by Chad Daniels on behalf of Steve Henry. The subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling and multiple accessory structures. The proposed split would create parcel J, a 2.29 acre parcel. This parcel would contain the single-family dwelling, the accessory structures as well. The proposed split is for purpose of sale. And so this just shows the plot of survey that was submitted. So this is parcel J. This is an overview and? So that split is just proposed within this general area right here. Our future land use map does not have a designation other than the default, which would be agricultural for this property. Reviewing with subdivision codes, staff didn't know any concerns with this request. So we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Do you have questions or comments from anyone on the commission?
So it's within the two-mile limit, but not in the city limits.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone in the audience that's here to speak on this agenda item? Would someone like to make a motion on this item?
I will, if nobody else will. I recommend that the request be approved as submitted.
A second.
Harris?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Wormsby?
Bob?
Yeah, yes.
Richie?
Yes.
All right, Item 7C, consider recommendation on request for approval of a plot of survey on behalf of Jake Reynolds for the property identified as parcel number 140 slash 0233-0640.
This is also a plot of survey request submitted by Chad Daniels on behalf of Yoder Family Revocable Trust. The subject property is currently vacant and is used for row crop production. The proposed split would create parcel D, 5 acre parcel. The applicant has indicated that the proposed split is for purpose of sale and future investment. So this shows that plot of survey that was submitted. So this is where that existing business is located. And then this is where that proposed split is. And this shows our future land use map and then that area. So again, that, this is generally the area of where that split is proposed. The future land use map is guiding for low-density residential and neighborhood mixed use. So that's going to be this area here. Because the proposed split doesn't quite meet our subdivision code, neither are your land use map. The city, your staff is recommending denial of the application.
You go back to that, one of those maps, that one. Where's the city limits?
The city limits is this purple line right here. And then it goes up along 10th Avenue and then right out. So it's just out of the city limits, butting right next to it.
And the city limits goes all the way to G 36?
R 63. Yeah, it's R 30, R 63, but it goes all the way? Looking at it really quick here. No, it goes, it goes all the way to R 36 along Highway 92 and then these two 40-acre sections here over as well. But then there is a gap between those two where it is not adjacent to R 63. Can you pull up? Can't pull up, peeking at all. Really quick, maybe that'll help. Good, show, just sometimes it's easier to show it a map than it is for me to explain it, so.
So the reason for the denial would be because of what their proposed usage is for?
Yeah, so the, the way we see it, again, every subdivision we look at has to be approved against our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan calls for this to be a future residential area, the existing business out there. And it just, because of that, it does not meet our comprehensive plan. If you look here and just zoom out a little bit, so you can see those, those purple lines are the city limit lines. So it kind of goes out along Inwood there, down for about a quarter mile. And then there's a gap that is not adjacent to R 63. And then you can see again to the south there, it goes adjacent just along the properties, along Highway 92.
We also, and staff report that future plans, hopes is to extend Iowa across the southern part of this property, straight west to 110th or, or all the way to R 63.
No, so the?
Around this location.
There is an eventual, the, the comprehensive plan will then show that eventually that road would make a curve somewhere to the north and essentially align with the intersection of Inwood and R 63. So Iowa would be that thoroughfare that would come through that area.
That would be, um, if it were there, a kind of a major traffic mover on the west side, wouldn't it? So precious on, since this is not in the city limits, if we were to recommend denial, if the city council were to buy this, then what would be the process?
As far as appeals are?
Yeah, for the applicant.
I mean, it can always be appealed to district court in your ruling that the council ultimately makes on that, but those would be, that would be the next option. It is required, so since it's in the county, you're, you are required. If the city has taken out their extraterritorial subdivision review, you need resolutions of approval from both the city and the county to record the split.
So theoretically, the city could deny this and the county could approve it?
Yes. But, but, I mean, you need both resolutions of approval. So you'd be missing one resolution of approval for the recordation. And vice versa, we could approve it and the county could say no, and it wouldn't be approved, because you wouldn't have both.
Thank you.
Do I have any other questions or comments from anyone on the commission? Did you want to?
Sure. Jim Linsley, or to West Henderson Avenue, you know. Based on the conversation, I haven't answered the first question I had. If the one or the two don't approve this, what happens then? Does it, does that stop or do they still have the ability to go forward? Selling this land, even how it's currently sold?
Yeah, without, without both jurisdictions approving the split, it would not be able to happen.
Okay.
There's, but there, there again, there's avenues, you know, you, the applicant could appeal that to district court, there could be an overturn of that. And processes in place for that, but without those processes taking place at that point, that would be the outcome.
Okay, I can answer my questions.
Yeah. Do I have anyone else in the audience that's here to speak on this item?
Dennis Vanpleen, 2400 West Henderson. If this does get approved, do we have any control over what kind of a business goes in there? In other words, you know, are they going to be processing nuclear waste? You know, that kind of a thing?
Any, I mean, any businesses that, that were to come to the, to the city would have to go through an approval process and submit an application before anything would be able to be placed there and all residents within a two-mile radius? Is that right?
Yeah, well, so we have subdivision jurisdiction within two miles. We don't have zoning authority within two miles. So this being still outside of the city, the zoning does fall back on the county, not the city. So the county would be able to dictate what can and can't go there. I don't know what the zoning ordinance says on that. We, we'd have to ask them, I guess, on that one, but I, I don't have that information.
So we will be informed at a certain point in time if it does pass and it comes to be fact.
There would be nothing left for the city to do. I don't know the county's process on that. Really, it ultimately falls back on the county because they have the actual land use jurisdiction over what can and can't go there. The only thing the city can control is the subdivision of ground out in this area. Does that make sense?
I do.
Yeah.
Not, not really.
I was gonna say.
Control, then the other time you don't.
Yeah.
Yes.
Weird.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Do I have anyone else that?
Yeah.
Come on down?
My name is Jim Yoder, I own the property and you would've said I was gonna be here, here ago, I would've said, no. Things happened in my life. I had heart surgery a month and a half ago. Had some other issues to deal with. Blake came to me and said, "I'm building the new building next to your property, and it's close enough that, like a few feet, why not buy five acres? I think it would be cleaner, it would be easier instead of that thing." My comment is, this is, this is area over here, two-thirds of that area is not even buildable. It's not even, it's, the part of the property, this part of the property right here, you could put another building maybe right here. That whole thing is, is, uh, it's, it's marsh, I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's, it's not good for crops, it's not good for building. But, you know. Blake needs my help, so I thought I'd help him out. And, uh, the other issue is, is being an absentee landowner been a real problem. We've had stuff dumped on our property, we've had stuff left in our pond. We've had people dump material on our property that, you know. You know, I tried to be a good neighbor, but, you know, after a little bit, it just. I guess what I'm saying is, is if you don't approve five acres, then I'll just sell the whole property to Blake. Then it will be commercial. I didn't think I'd be saying that right now. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Blake Reynolds, so little bit of background. Went through the county's billing permit process. The building's actually 99% finished out of today. Means codes and everything required by the county. The biggest reason why I wanted a few more feet was we had to put in several feet of fill. And if you're driven by my place, I take a lot of pride in keeping everything clean, respectable looking. Right now, the dandelions are a little bit of a problem, but. So other than that, I try to keep everything mowed and clean and looking very respectable. The reason why I wanted 20 or 30 feet of Jim's property was to be able to add more fill and create a mowable slope so I could actually have nice-looking grass and keep that cleaned up on the corner side of the property. People looking across from the other direction wouldn't be looking at a concrete wall or a slope growing up into all grass and weeds and looking poor. So. Appreciate your support and it would be zoned commercial because as the county stated to me, they can't have partial, under 20 acres, less than, or, excuse me, they can't have a partial less than 20 acres with two different zoning on that same property. The only reason why it would be zoned commercial is because my existing property is zoned commercial and this one would have to be matched for that. At this point, nothing's going to change. I mean, can't predict the future, but there's no reason for, Jim said, can't build on a good majority of that. So it's not providing a ton of value other than allowing me to be nice and clean. So I appreciate your support.
Yeah.
Could you, could you tell us what your business is? Current business?
Yeah, so I wish I could have predicted what my business would have turned into 10 years ago when I started. I actually started with my parents in 2008 as a pioneer seed dealer at Reynolds Field Service. In 2013, bought that five-acre partial and built that building to be, well, it was a different building that blew down in 2018, but we're a precision planting dealer, so we bring in corn and soybean planters, rebuild them from ground drive or hydraulic drive to electric drive and essentially just selling the technology that goes on that equipment. I also farm, so they run both out of that same business because they intertwine very much alike, but essentially just equipment's moving in and out of there. The building that I build is strictly for storage so customers can bring their equipment in and work inside a building and sell, leaving it set out front in the gravel.
One last question.
You bet.
Since this is commercial according to the county, did they put any restrictions on it or how broad is commercial zoning in the county? You know?
That was.
Could you change, you could change it to something else? That's just done in commercial?
I changed it in 2013 from agriculture to commercial because that was the recommendation from Bob Folkstead. You're asking, apparently 10 years ago, on what, what it was?
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else in the audience to speak on this item? Do you have any other questions or comments from commission?
The comprehensive plan calls for this to be mixed-use, low-density residential in the future. I know the, that part of the city or adjacent to the city is the highest growth potential as identified in the comprehensive plan. We don't know what the county's commercial zoning is.
Do not know that. If that is information that you need, we could definitely get that for you and back at a future meeting if that's of interest. But again, right now, I just, I don't know what that is.
I just want to know how broad it is. I, I guess some people expressed concern, they don't live, I don't know, quarter of a mile away. About a quarter of a mile to Henderson, or is it a half?
Half. Our backyard is on the property line.
Okay, that's about a half mile. And they expressed concerns, and I guess I would have some concerns too, but I have no idea what commercial zoning in the county means.
And the other thing to note too is that the county is in the process of doing something similar to what we did a couple of years ago and going through a full rewrite of their zoning code too. So, you know, even though it could say something today and two to three months, that could change too, so.
So just to clarify, we're only talking about parcel D, the, the red block. We're not talking about the entire property line, which is blue.
Yes. So it's, it's a, so the, the parcel that the current buildings are on, about the same size parcel just to the east of that, and Emily's kind of outlining it here with that marker. That is the piece that we are looking at. Uh, the existing business, but the, the property that is being split is the property that's outlined in blue.
Just feels like that particular parcel is quite a ways away from our city limit lines. And if that's the only parcel they're asking for this on, it feels a little bit different than the entire parcel, which sounds like that could be up for sale if this didn't go through. And there's already a building there, is that correct?
Yeah, it's my understanding, and I know the applicant said it as well too, that there, there is a, an additional building that is there right now that is being built. And then this is just to get a little bit of, initially to get a little bit of extra ground on the backside of that, but in the end, it turned into the approximately five acres, whatever that is. Again, and just for clarification, the city doesn't control zoning and in that sense, does not control what is to be built. So the permitting for those structures does not come through the city. We just review the subdivision splits around incorporated area.
Would anybody like to make a motion on this item?
Let's, can we talk a little bit more? Champ, this is, this is a very difficult decision.
Yep.
And as a part, you know, we're at the planning and zoning commission. We went through that whole process of opening a comprehensive plan. And I, I have, I share the neighbors' concerns about what can be built there. I've lived here a long time. One of the examples I would use of not planning well for the future is having the elevator now in the middle of town. It was right at the time, I remember watching them build those elevators. But now, looking back on it from this perspective, and I, I guess, we, one of our jobs is to try to not create that here and the growth potential that we see and the priority is to go that direction, north and west, for growth. On the other hand, some building there that sticks over on the property on a few feet doesn't, doesn't give me a lot of heartburn right now. Now, I'm probably speaking, I'm getting in deep water here, but is there a way to approve this with some kind of an agreement that there wouldn't be additional commercial development there? Can that be done? Probably need the city attorney to answer that.
Yeah, I mean, there, there would have to be some sort of, you know, I, I don't want to say deed restriction would be one way to do it or a note of some sort on the plot of survey to say that there would be no additional development. And, and I don't know if that's something that the applicant is willing to do or not, but I, I think there is probably a way we could get to that point, yes.
I'm not going to ask you for commitment right now, but I guess one possibility is for us to wait, take this up in two weeks at our next meeting and for you to consider what kind of restrictions might be agreeable to you. And again, our con- And again, our concern is that future growth, the city out there, and if you would decide to change that to another commercial use, it might not be compatible. And I guess on the other hand, these folks, I think, have a legitimate concern of what's going on. I don't know, thinking out loud here, but trying to come to some resolution that everybody gets something out of it. Nobody gets hurt too bad.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So with the planning and zoning, I understand that there's future housing growth in that area. I understand. But what would the town of Indianola be without commercial development? We have to have jobs. We have to have industry. And 10 years ago, the same commercial use was still stated. There was no platte survey on that five acres originally that the city did not have to approve. County was the only one that had to approve of that at that time. Therefore, I was able by that property, get its own commercial. Looking forward, as we've stated, there's no ability to build there without, it would require me the same in engineering and things to build on that additional five acre partial than what's there. But the thing to keep in mind is R 63 is a farm to table road or farm, farm road.
Market.
Farm to market is the correct term. So it was recommended to me 10 years ago to build in the industrial park. What's the industrial park turned into today? There's housing all the way around it on every side except for the east side. That is a perfect location for the exact equipment that I'm bringing in and out. You can't bring 20 foot plus wide equipment up and down into the industrial park. To be able to go up and down a farm to market road and drive a half mile in on the gravel that's there existing today right next to Herbert's Scrapyard, which doesn't look as nice as my property that you guys still have no control over because it's not going to be split into a separate partial at this time. To me, that is a perfect place for that property and for that commercial business because it ties right into that farm to market road. So my question would be to you is what is the downside other than losing 10 houses? But then turning around and gaining employment, job opportunities and industry growth?
Well, the downside. If given what might be the breadth of county definition of commercial, we would have virtually nothing to say about it if we approved this. And if you went ahead and in the future, you decided to radically change whatever your business is. That's what I see as the potential downside. You may not be planning on doing that. Like you say, 10 years ago, you weren't planning on doing this either.
I was doing this 10 years ago. I just didn't anticipate the growth of what I've done. So my question would be is, or I guess a point would be that if I bought the entire 75 acres, you would have no control over what happened there because there would be no platte survey. And there would be no approval from the city, only the county. The county wouldn't even have to approve of anything because it would be agricultural land.
Yep, you're right.
So I just wanted to make that point clear.
And this is a really odd situation where we, law says we're supposed to review those developments within two miles of the existing city limit. And we have limited say over what what we're reviewing. As you can see, some of them, we don't even spend any time on because they're not in a growth area. They're not in the area where we expect the city to be expanding in the future. So this one is one of the rare exceptions that we face that we have to, I I think seriously consider all sides of it.
So to your point, the one that you just approved on 143rd and how close that is to the city limits. Give or take three quarters of a mile. I know exactly where that property is. And we're talking a half mile from the south mine. So we're talking a quarter mile difference. And you're telling me that the piece on the northeast side of town on 143rd is not in a growth area, but that is.
The one on 143rd wasn't a growth area, but it was splitting off a residential lot in a future area that, you know, shows that it's an agricultural area anyway. So that one did meet our comprehensive plan.
Do we have any other questions or comments from one on the commission or the audience? So. Would anyone like to make a motion or what are we thinking on this one then? How was everybody?
We make a deferment? Is there opportunity as Al is recommending that we, the applicant has a, some sort of concrete language that this is what it'll be used for?
So if I can get, sorry, excuse me, didn't mean to interrupt you.
You're fine. Thank you.
No, I I was gonna say, if I'm gathering everything that's kind of been discussed, there's, there's a few things. First, we want to get a good idea of what the current zoning for the county would and would not allow in that zoning designation. Full disclosure though, that that could change in the future, but you know, we don't know what that's going to be. But we can give you what we know for now, so we can look into that. And then the second thing I know Commissioner Ferris asked about was, you know, what, what could we do to make sure that, you know, there isn't any, I want to say further development, just that what's there right now with the existing building matches what's there? And knowing what the applicant has discussed is they're, they're just looking for a little bit more ground to kind of get some, get some better elevation and grade on that back portion on there. So what can we do to possibly put some note on the platte if that is enforceable or whatever that may be? And I think that's something we'll just have to discuss with our attorney to see what options we have. I've got some ideas, but I just don't know how legally enforceable they all would be. So if it's those two things that you want us to look at, and then ultimately the motion is to report back to us to work through some of those issues and bring it forward your next meeting, we can definitely do that.
If we defer it, is it realistic that it will be able to come back on the next, in two weeks?
Yeah, I think that's realistic. And if if not, if you don't have all the information by the deadline to get on the next agenda and we have to everything published, you know, we can push it back another two weeks after that. So for some reason, I think we have like three weeks or no, we don't.
It's maybe May 23rd.
May 23rd, so I was thinking, I know that there's a fifth Monday. I've been close to the end of the month.
I would like to move that we per decision on this tonight and ask for the staff to bring it back in two weeks after consulting with the attorney and apps with the applicant and finding out what the county zoning needs, commercial zoning needs. Time we can make a decision.
I second that.
Arm speed?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Just one other question on that item. If if we're deferring it for two weeks, will surrounding neighbors get a notification about that again? Or is this the notification?
We typically don't notify on that one as deferral on it. So yeah, I guess the notification would be that on the 23rd, we'll likely be bringing it back.
All right. Item 8A, the building permit report.
I guess I'll ask if there's any questions on that. Had the somewhat slow start to the year and I think people picked up. And I know so far maybe we've picked up a point a bit too, so that's good. But I, we're not alone when you look metrowide on on where we're falling back right now in development. I think just with the economy, everybody's at about that same percentage of being down from where we were last year, so.
Great. Item 8B, current project?
Current projects, nothing new to report on that. We're still working through some stuff with Wesley Life and getting that on the Planning and Zoning Commission's agenda. We're working through Prairie Glen Platform and the construction documents. That's not something that the commission reviews, but we're, we're pretty close to hopefully having approval on that one pretty soon. Oh, and then we did, we do have a another amendment to the PUD for Summer Crest that was submitted last week. So that will likely be on your next agenda. I don't anticipate really any staff comments on that one from our review team, but that one should come forward at your next meeting.
We have two more platte surveys as well. That likely will be on the 23rd, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is, I had a person ask me. A new house is built, certain trees are, are, that's builder's responsibility before they get a certificate of occupancy? Or is it the buyers?
For the most part, it's the builder's responsibility. What happens when you, so so let me just give you scenarios and this is what we run into quite a bit. The house gets finished on December 1st. You can't put exotic trees in at that time of year. So we'll typically give a temp CO and they're able to then wait a few months. Well, sometimes in that process, there is an agreement that is reached between builder and property owner where something happens and then it's somebody else's responsibility to do it. Ultimately, for us, it comes back on whoever that property owner is at that time. And that's part of the temp CO is it it goes on to whoever that property owner is going to be. So turns into somewhat of a private matter at that point. We dealing with, I think, a few issues from what I've been able to understand through Tim or Building Official and some disagreements between some builders and property owners on who is supposed to be taking care of those. I will tell you one thing that we did change with our zoning code update was we now have bonds that need to be placed in those instances. So if trees and shrubs aren't put in, our code requires that you put up a bond. That is 1.5% the cost of the installation. And then the city can release that once those go in. That way, if they aren't put in, then we have those funds available to get those put in. So then really how that gets paid for, it's a little bit easier to track some of that stuff because how that gets paid for on the onset of the temp CO is known upfront who's paying for that.
This person lives near and, oh, but how come those people aren't putting in required trees? Thank you.
Houses that are CO'd like today, for example, if we were to do one today, it's pretty easy because we make that stuff be in before we do anything.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Good.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.